Rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fellow board members, community members, administration, and others, welcome, welcome, welcome. Mary, would you take attendance, please?
Absolutely. President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Griffith?
Here.
Secretary Hanser, present. Treasurer Bailey?
Here.
Trustee DeAlessandro?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Trustee Schaper?
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Superintendent Weaver, any changes to the board agenda?
Not tonight.
All right, thank you. We move on to our consent agenda. Minutes of June 21, 2022, special meeting, bills payable, June 2022. Looking for someone to put this motion on the floor. Eric?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Chad, support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, everyone, Board of Education matters, 4A, we're going into closed session. Are attorneys here?
No, I haven't seen them.
All right, want to skip past it?
No, we do got to go in to talk about the asking.
I mean, skip past it and see if they come.
Oh, oh, oh.
Would you want to do the closed session a little bit later and start moving through the agenda?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay, let's give it maybe 15 minutes and see what the...
Yes.
Okay. All right, everyone, so we're going to move past A, move ourselves towards B, bank depository signature for bank accounts. Sam, this is something we do every year, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I thought so. So we can move right to the motion, Sam?
Right.
All right, would someone like to put the first motion on? Chad?
Move to approve that Oxford Bank, JP Morgan Chase, BMO Harris Bank, NA, Flagstar Bank, Comerica, Fifth Third Bank, Huntington Bank, BNY Mellon, and Bank of America be named as depositories of school funds for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Eric, support? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would someone like to do number two, bank depositories? Eric?
Move to authorize Sam Barna to transfer funds between depository accounts and transfer accounts and transact wire transfers for investment purposes for the 2022-2023 school year with approval of Ken Weaver as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Membership to the MASB, would someone put this motion on the floor? Chad?
Move to approve Oxford Community Schools Board of Education's continued membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards for the 2022-2023 school year at a cost of $8,804 based on student enrollment as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Mary, support? Any discussion? Yes, Mary.
Thank you, President Donnelly. Thank you very much. I just wanted to remind the board and let folks know that MASB provides us a lot of services, most of which center around training and leadership services. They have many classes, certifications available. I just received my Level 5 certification through MASB. It's a lot of great learning opportunities that they offer us. They also spend time and energy on advocating for public education at the, mostly at the state level, but also at the national level, and support public education efforts there on our behalf.
Thank you for that. Mary, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, everybody, let's draw a line right there. Mr. Mullins is here, so we can go back to 4A. Would someone like to put the motion on the floor for a closed session? Mary?
Moved and supported to move to meet enclosed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8(c) for the purpose of strategy and negotiation sessions connected with a collective bargaining agreement, and Section 8e for the purpose of consulting with its attorney regarding trial strategy in connection with case numbers 21-CV-12871, 22-CV-10407, 22-CV-10805, 22-CV-11250,
Thank you, Mary. Support? Dan, support?
Or...
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mary, would you take us through a roll call vote?
Ms. Schaper? I'm sorry?
She said yes.
Mr. DeAlessandro?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Hanser, yes. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes. All right, it is 6:38. We're going to go into closed session. Board, we're going into the same room we did last time, and then for everyone else, we'll be back soon. We're going to be back into our regular session, and let's move through some more of these annual motions that we go through. I believe we're at C2. Would everybody agree with that?
Yes.
All right. MHSSA membership resolution, would someone please volunteer to put that motion on the floor? Eric?
Move to approve the MHSSA membership resolution for the year of August 1, 2022 through July 31, 2023 as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there support? Heather, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To appointed legal counsel, would someone please put that motion on the floor? Chad?
Move to appoint Thrun Law Firm, PC, Miller Johnson, Saunders, Winters, McNeil, Collins and Blaha, Gia Marco, Mullins and Horton, PC, and Varnum LLP pursuant to engagement letters dated May 12, 2022, and May 24, 2022 with Varnum LLP as legal counsel for Oxford Community Schools for 2022-2023 as presented.
Thank you very much. Is there support? Mary, support? Any discussion? Dan?
So going through 2022 to 2023, it says 2022-2023 as presented, does that lock us in through the fiscal year of 2023 or with these firms?
It doesn't say school year.
Does it say school year?
It doesn't say that in the motion.
How is that typically written, everyone?
I see the other one.
It's one up here, it says 2022-2023.
Oh, I see what you're saying, Dan. Good catch. In the one that we previously did, it says for the 2022-2023 school year.
Correct.
Those words are not in the appointed legal counsel. Do they belong there? Is that how it's defined? Is our legal counsel done by school year? I think so.
Yes.
All right, so where appropriately amended should that be?
No.
No, I didn't, no one's...
It was supported, and then this is discussion.
All right, so we're, but for our sake, where do you want to put that school year?
After the years.
There we go.
Yeah, the 2022-2023 school years.
All right, who did the original motion?
Chad.
Would you do it again with that addition?
We have to vote on the motion that's on the table, though.
Did we second it? Yeah, we did, because we went to discussion.
We have to vote on that. Okay.
My understanding is Varnum is represented in Board, but we're seeing they're representing the school district. Should that be separated?
I believe it should.
Because Varnum is not representing the school, they're representing the school Board.
I don't have the legal nod to tell you.
I don't either.
I think all the firms, they'll represent you in one way or another at the board as well. That's what I was just saying. Right. Blaha is a, is not so much a district but a board.
As well. I mean, it's both.
But Varnum is exclusively representing the board. Paid for by the district.
Well...
So we're not paying for it, I mean, in that sense. So, Dan?
I think by extending the fact that we are, we're not employees, but we're agents of the community in which the school is a part of, I know it's kind of a stretch, but I believe that that is the intent in which that is written, and I think although Varnum is paid, it represents the board, and we could also utilize them in some other way, shape, or form for the district in the future if we deem so necessary.
Well, I will bring up Dan, too, and Thomas. The engagement letters, it does say, I believe, if I remember correctly, that they are representing the board. So it says pursuant to the engagement letters here. So it does say that that is the relationship.
Okay. So by stating that it's pursuant to the engagement letters, that covers that portion of it?
Yes.
And if we can also utilize them if we need them on another issue.
All right, so what conclusion have we reached besides the fact that we want to say school year? Do we want to pull out Varnum separately or leave it where it is?
I think it does.
Mary?
I think that the way it is written, including all of them, gives us a little more leeway, as Dan mentioned, moving forward, so it doesn't limit us so much. And I'm also not sure that the board in and of itself can sign a contract for just the board. It would be on behalf of the district, because the board is not its own entity, right? The ability to sign, I mean, we sign on behalf of, on behalf of the district.
We approve the signature that Ken or whomever makes that decision upon the board. Anything that's done has to have board approval, so it would come up through anybody engaging this district in a contract, that contract would then have to be approved by us. So even though they're all listed here, if we engage them on another matter, it would have to be board-approved, even though they're working for the Oxford Community School District. If that makes it clear to my...
Corey?
So tomorrow, when you get the email from members of the community saying Varnum is associated with the school, there's no transparency, there's no separation.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, how do we shut that up?
So your main reason for wanting to specifically mention the school board is for that transparency issue and that third party being independent and not in a direct relationship with the school district?
Yes.
Except that it gets paid by it.
Correct.
I see what you're saying. So Corey is thinking about the whole idea of making sure that Varnum is part of the third-party review is set differently than all the other attorneys, because the district isn't involved and doesn't have any connection to what they're doing for us.
Correct.
Except that we're paying them.
That's it, that they're paying them, but they don't, they don't have...
The payment comes from us and the representation is of us. I don't know, it's kind of a gray area.
You know, I understand what Corey's saying, but let's be frank about it. You know, I think everybody's had their opinion on us individually and us as a body, and you know, you're just going to have to get to that point where you just live in the, you just live in the muck, I guess. And, you know, you can't, you never go please everybody, we all know that. I think the steps that we have taken in the past, we've learned a lot from, and honestly, I believe that, you know, Varnum's done a really good job of staying away from the district as far as our employees. They have been directed by the board, and, you know, like we said, you just, I don't know. I'm not going to let a couple people dictate which direction that we're going to make decisions. You know, if they want to get on Facebook, let them get on Facebook or wherever else they want to go.
So let's get a motion on the floor and see where it takes us.
You got to shoot, you got to vote down.
Or you got to shoot the one down.
Yep.
But it wasn't seconded, I don't think.
Yeah, I think it was, because I opened it up for discussion, and that's where it all came out, so...
Oh, I can get a second, okay.
So it has to be voted down and then a new motion.
So I don't think it needs a roll call, we'll just say all in favor.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right. Someone want to shoot at a new, Heather?
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, with the new, with the change, and let's see if it passes.
Move to appoint Thrun Law Firm, PC, Miller Johnson, Saunders, Winters, McNeil, Collins and Blaha, Gia Marco, Mullins and Horton, PC, and Varnum LLP pursuant to the engagement letters dated May 12, 2022, and May 24, 2022, with Varnum LLP as legal counsel for Oxford Community Schools for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Thank you. Is there support? Mary, support? Discussion on this motion? Mary?
Thank you. So it seems to me that as we went through that again, it does, as I think was mentioned, it does specify that Varnum is pursuant to the engagement letters, as we had said, so that makes more sense to me now to Corey's point, because it is, it does separate them, though it's in the same motion.
Any other comments? All right. Are you seeking to amend the motion? Or do you want to see if it passes as is, and if it doesn't, then we'll write it, do it again? So it can be amended because, correct? Parliamentarian?
It can be, it's easier to vote it down if you're going to rewrite it.
Okay.
If there's any other discussion, it should probably go for the vote, then.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Is that all? Is that ayes for everybody? Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Let's move to appoint board representative on property matters. Would someone put that motion on the floor, please? Mary?
Move to appoint Ken Weaver and Sam Barna to represent the Board of Education in all property matters, and also authorize them to sign board-approved purchase, sale, and lease agreements on the board's behalf for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Thank you very much. Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Designate newspapers for district publications. Heather?
Move to designate the Oxford Leader or the Oakland Press for publication of legal notices for the Board of Education for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Thank you. Is there support? Eric, support? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, curriculum and instruction, OVA classroom, novel additions?
Yeah, Mr. Wolf's going to introduce Mrs. Shell.
Good evening. I'm going to invite up Janet Shell, Oxford Virtual Academy principal, to discuss the OVA novel study and the novel ELA additions to the curriculum.
Thank you. Janet, will you tell me if the green light is on that microphone, would you hit the button? No, not that one, on the microphone stand, the one that's on the stage. Hit that little button.
Now it's green. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, good evening, and thank you for letting me present the OVA novel study. It's kind of refreshing to be able to talk about kids and education and really good fun things, so this is just kind of an informational presentation. Oxford Virtual Academy has purchased curriculum, and our teachers continue to customize and refine it, so this novel study presentation is about bringing fresh choices. So we're really excited, I think, that the quote that stood out to me with the English Department, Matt, that reading should not be presented to children as a chore, a duty, but as a gift. And that's what we really wanted in this, to get across in this presentation. So just to give you an idea of the overview design, I began with backwards design, as we all try to do when we're designing units of study, but the foundation of what they're doing really is kind of a building blocks for our next venture, which is to create our own curriculum, but for right now, they're taking existing board-approved curriculum and adding some really cool new novel projects. They are looking at the standards, more student-centered or competency-based, and creating learning targets. So they spent the last couple of years really looking at a lot of novels that would be time-appropriate, at least controversial, that kids would be interested in, so that's kind of the journey that they set apart, set upon, to be able to create these unit studies. So they wanted lessons that would bring in supporting standards and skills as well as cross-curricular concepts. Characteristics from The Portrait of a Graduate were very important to the team, and SEL components. So on the slides here, the social-emotional learning was really important, so they wanted book club groups, read alouds, thoughtful projects, The Portrait of a Graduate, they wanted to focus on being good communicators, enquirers, thinkers, reflective, caring, and open-minded, and then cross-curricular projects, introducing historical connections, scientific concepts, psychology principles, authors' craft, and race relations. So I asked them, why these books? So, and they wanted to kind of explain their ideas with the literary themes. So for eighth grade, they proposed The Silence Between Us by Alessandra Bates, and I'm not going to read all of that to you, but it really stood out to me, and I wanted to point out that this book connects readers by exploring common experiences and emotions that all humans share, and the practice of empathy and learning how to talk to others about issues they may not understand. Specifically in this book, the protagonist of the novel is a deaf high school student, so it takes on kind of the deaf community and that experience, and together, the girl and her hearing peers navigate creating compassion for one another. So there were no controversial considerations for this novel for eighth grade. For ninth and 10th grade, The Crossover was a potential novel, Kwame Alexander, and this one, it's about the realities of growing from childhood to adulthood, making up the story, but the real lessons are learned as communities are formed to support dreams, stand by each other through hardships, and celebrate with one another in triumphs in and off the court. So it, I think, if you look at that, especially with the population of our ninth and 10th graders, we thought this would be a really good choice. The controversial considerations here, there's a father's death, a reference to sex, but nothing explicit, so we just wanted that to be known, very mild, nothing explicit in it. Another ninth and 10th grade book in this cycle is To Kill Mockingbird, it's already been approved, a coming-of-age story. Themes include prejudice, integrity, justice, innocence, and good versus evil. Controversial considerations are race relations. And then, for 11th and 12th grade, they really were interested in Butterfly Yellow by Tang Hahli. This is about two main characters. They are from an affluent family in Vietnam, and it's not difficult to find the universal ideas of identity of families and survival shared between both characters. Through courage and strength, the characters in this novel show the reader what true friendship is. So they face hardship, challenges, and the whole idea of compassion, displaying empathy. Characters show the reader what it looks like to love and support others even when it's challenging, and I think, you know, the last few years, what we've all been through, these are very timely choices, so they were really excited about these. Controversial considerations for this novel, there's some very mild language, it deals with immigration and assimilation. For 11th and 12th grade, another one is In the Wild Light by Jeff Zentner. This talks about not fitting in, life can feel overwhelming, but this particular novel explores what it means to find your people and hold on to them, supporting one another through ups and downs, and encouraging each other to pursue a future centered on one's own strengths and passions. Controversial considerations in this, mild language, there's just a brief mention of drug addiction, same-sex marriage, and parent death are mentioned. So the novel projects, they really center around creating songs, creating podcasts, map the setting, they do caricature, picture selfie, characters from the novel, and they have a tangled web activity that's creating a web map. So those are some of the ways that they're going to get the kids, the students, to explore and present their learning in creative, modern ways, along with writing essays. So that's pretty much the novel package that we'd like to just inform you, and hopefully... Any questions?
Janet, thank you. Any board members have a comment or question? Mary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Shell. This is so exciting. I want to now read all these books.
I know.
So thank you. I really like, I really like the variety of authors that they chose and the variety of stories, so I just really appreciate that personally. I'd be really interested in to see what some of these projects look like, so if you can connect me or President Donnelly, I'd love to see some of these. I don't know if any of the folks come in person, if it's all virtual, whatever that looks like, please, I want to see what they do with this, this is really exciting.
We'd love to do like almost a video walkthrough, where we can kind of give you a tour. There is a link, I think you just have the PDF, but I can send it to you, of some of the projects from this past year that are going to be similar this year.
Okay, great. I would really love to keep up with this. I love reading, and I love that we're making it exciting, that's a great quote, too.
Yeah.
It is a gift.
It's a gift, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Just real quick, if I may, just the reason why you're not approving anything is these are additions to existing classes, as we're not fully rewriting the curriculum, but we wanted to make sure that you are aware of, these are the whole group or whole class novels that are being added, so we're trying to make sure that we keep you, we'll do this the same with seated, that the whole group or whole classroom novels, that you're aware of what's there, and so that you have a, as people ask in the community and so forth, you have an idea of what's being used.
Yeah, thank you for this.
Yeah.
That's good. Mr. Barna, do you need to, want to speak to this school bond qualification loan program before it gets put on the floor?
Yes, please. I'd just like to say first that this is something that we do annually, and this is obviously for the fiscal year '23, this proposal.
All right, very good. Would someone like to put this motion on the floor? Mary?
Move to approve the school loan revolving fund resolution as presented.
Thank you. Support? Heather, support? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nutrition services purchase information?
Yes, so I just wanted to give you, the board, just an FYI, in food services, Patty will be coming forward in August with a request for the purchase of a combination oven, one of the combination ovens that she utilizes on a daily basis here at the High School school, continuously for our student body here, is no longer operable, and it can't be fixed. And so, she will be coming forward with a purchase, probably be in the $50,000-plus range. It's a commercial combination oven, convection, so on and so forth. And so, just wanted to bring you, you know, give you a heads up and let you know that that will be coming, just to let you know she'll be paying for this out of the cafeteria budget. She does have a sizable fund balance that will enable her to easily purchase this.
Thank you, Sam.
So, we are doing this to make sure that you've got, give a heads up, the board, that this purchase is coming, and that we're heard when it is in the packet, hopefully August 9th, that we'll be also looking for approval at that point, too. So, trying to give you a heads up in this manner.
Great job, thank you. C and D are information about laptop purchases, are these ones we already looked at, or ones that are still coming?
Actually, the ones that we, these are going to be coming down in February, or I'm sorry, February, in August as well.
Okay.
And so, these purchases, again, are something that we always budget for on an annual basis. However, we do have quotes specifically for 4,000 units. This is not going to be a purchase at one time. What this purpose was is to show you basically what the estimate is per unit for these types of devices, 14-inch devices. You see four quotes within your board packet, they're both, the big differences are, one set is a touchscreen, the other is not, and so there is a $25 difference, variance between those. In addition to the fact that there is a service maintenance agreement, extended service maintenance agreement, that also includes accidental damage protection, which increases approximately $31 the cost per unit. So, those two variations are why you have four different proposals in front of you. And again, not asking for approval tonight, just wanted to show you what will be brought forward to you in August.
And so, one of these things is, for these 4,000, is we are looking at putting the seated buildings on a cycle, and trying to get so that we don't have to replace them all at the same time, but trying to spread it out, and also having it on a, on a regular cycle of replacement, replenishment, so that as we go through, many of our devices right now are getting to be where they're out of real use. And they're still working and doing fine, and we'll start the year with them. But we've, in reorganizing the tech department, this has been part of the charge. Mrs. Lamond and Sash have really been working, as well as the rest of the department, have been working hard in the technology department, and coming up with a plan, and as well as the insurance plan, and trying to move forward as to how we're going to check the devices out individually to the kids, and also have one-to-one at K-5. So, this is, that's why the number of 4,000 eventually, but you'll probably just in August be approving, I think it's like half.
Okay.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. And Sam, are we down to E, community center construction update?
We are, actually.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, finally, after some fumbling. Yes, so I wanted to provide you with an update with the Community Health, Honor Community Health Center here at the high school in the 200 hallway, just to show you some of the most current renderings, and to show you kind of where we're at with the process. Right now, we are preparing bid documents, we finalized some of these original proposals, and before we send out the bid documents, we wanted to share this with you as a board. And again, this community counseling suite, the goal is to provide two private offices, as you can see, two clinical rooms, obviously a bathroom, staff break room, a laboratory, and a waiting area as well. If you can see here, I know it's kind of difficult to see, you may have your own devices as well, that pulls this up. You can see here, this is the end of the 200 hallway. Obviously, this is the most southeast-facing room, as you can see, and really just an expanded view upon how this layout, after several discussions with our architectural firm, as well as Honor Health, as well as our internal, obviously, folks, we've decided that this would probably be the best layout possibly for this room. And I wanted to show you that, as of right now, there are two entrances into this particular classroom. One is right here, where I have my arrow. The other is right here, where the future-to-be student entry is. And this would be closed off, so there would only be entry right here, except for outside individuals coming in that want to seek, obviously, counseling and treatment, if you will. They would be coming from an outside area here, which would be covered into a secure vestibule that you see right here where the cursor is. So, again, just wanted to show you, this is the latest drawings, and if you would like to ask some questions, then feel free.
Anyone? Dan?
So, you said that that area will be blocked off, right where that cursor...
That's correct, right here. Yeah, this is the hallway into, obviously, the 200 hall. There will not be a door here any longer.
Okay, so that won't, even though we won't have that?
Correct.
Because I was going to say, well, if we have a door and we're not going to use it, why even have it there? So, it's gone, right?
Yeah, right. There's going to be only one entry here for our students, obviously, and then we'll have, obviously, the opportunity for those coming from the outside of the school district, who would like, obviously, treatment as well, to come through here. And again, this would be a secure vestibule, that the reception desk would have to buzz in those individuals coming in.
And so, please, so the reception desk is part of that clinic there?
That's correct.
Or is it going all the way back into the main office?
No, that is, that is the reception for this area only.
And that is manned by our staff or this clinic's staff?
That's going to be manned by our clinic staff, the clinic staff, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Dan asked one question of mine, but it raised another question, though. So, the doorway for students to come in to that reception area, is that, I would imagine that that door is monitored then by the reception?
That's correct.
To make sure nobody else gets back in through, okay.
That is correct, absolutely, both areas, both for the students, as obviously, as well as those coming from the outside. That's right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Heather?
Real quick, like, a geography question, are you talking about over on the 500 side or the other side?
So, this is the 200 wing.
Right.
And at the very, I'm sorry, so this is, this is the south end.
South.
Yes, south, and sort of easterly facing as well, as if you look at the windows of the classroom currently, it faces east.
Dan?
How many other locations were of a thought process, where other locations could fit this footprint in our building?
Not many. I think this was one of, this was one of two.
I mean, we're, I'm just going to say, the elephant in the room, I don't like that corner.
I don't.
If we're talking about mental health, we're going right there. If that's the area that I'm thinking of, it's not, maybe I'm just turned around with the directions, I'm not real...
Southeast?
Yeah.
So, southeast would be...
So, yes.
It's the corner facing the parking lot by the stadium, correct?
Yes, correct, that's correct.
I mean, I don't know about that.
So, the services there are going to be mainly physical health, there's going to be PA there. Parents, in their registration at the beginning of the year, would have to sign off that their child could visit. Nobody could visit unless they had parent permission. Or 18, obviously, they're handled a little bit different at that point. As well as, it does like handle billing, insurance, and stuff like that, but at the same time, it won't turn people or children away or the community. So, that's part of what the community center is, is then also having access from the outside to be able to come in and get services as well, too. They will also handle some mental health, but they will be referring out mostly to Easter Seals. They will be mostly a gatekeeper, so to speak, and they would mostly be referring services to Easter Seals, who are located more towards the counseling end of the building and so forth. So, really, what's going to be there, and sometimes you may have mobile dental services being, maybe not offered through there necessarily, but coordinating services through there. So, what it does allow us to do is with this community center, is also they will be partnering with staff to help with physical health issues, trainings and so forth, as well as mental health trainings and so, as well. They really try to integrate into the staff. We were quite honestly, this was a partnership that we started, gosh, I think back in October, September, October, talking, that has taken quite a while, as we've worked through the process slowly but surely. And trying to figure out an area of the building, it was very difficult in trying to give access for the outside to make it secure, that was a priority as well, too. Security will be in that hallway right outside there, that's obviously is the bathroom that you were concerned about, I believe. Security is already stationed there as well, too. And we'll be looking at that student entrance to make sure that that is secure, so that it just can't be easy access in, once you get through the double doors that you would have access through. So, they would have to have appointments, be able to buzz in, be able to see these individuals, and make sure they're, they're able to come in. And it's our community that they would be allowing in, such as a parent who has a sick elementary kid, and they can't get it into their regular doctor, could now take their child here. A lot of walk-in availability, we visited the services, they have them in Pontiac, Rochester, I think Troy has one as well, too, into their school systems and that. And it really helps to integrate those health services, as well as help with something like trainings that we could possibly do with diabetes or diabetic children and so forth. So, it really allows that partnership to grow. We've been working with Rosa Thomas, who is the COO, I believe?
She is, that's correct.
Of Honor Community Health, and putting this together. It's been, it was part of the state funding, it was also part of the proposed package when Mr. Throne went up and asked for help from or assistance from the state legislature, it was part of that package as well, too, for help to the construction in this center. So, this is kind of bringing a part, bringing around the fulfillment of that.
Don't misunderstand, I love the idea. I have no problem with the idea. I know this is a tough building to kind of fit everything that we're trying to accommodate in there with the flow of traffic and what's the least, what's the most accessible, what's the least intrusive.
Yes.
I understand that, and I'm not, if that's the way I came off, please don't, that's not, that was my only question about it, so.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with it.
My directions really weren't how we faced.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, yeah, we've looked through the whole building, I mean, we walked many places, and there really wasn't, quite honestly, a lot of options that we had to be able to locate.
And I would like to add, you know, going on what Ken had just mentioned to you, that the proximity to a parking lot, the parking lot for our staff, our teachers, and so on and so forth, is really close to where we would be putting the entrance, the secure vestibule to the outside. And so, it is a very short walk, which is nice. In addition to the fact that this is one of only a few classrooms that are over 1,400 square feet, so I believe this square footage of this room is approximately 1,440 square feet. So, in order to accommodate all of these many rooms within our building here, there's really a very limited set of spaces available, and this is one of them.
Yeah, and trying to also give the outside community privacy, because we didn't want them chucking into the office, because then people know they're visiting. So, try to do all that and make sure it's being used by the community, because that's the whole point. That has been my concern with Mrs. Thomas, is, you know, making sure that if we're doing this, it not only benefits the students, but we would like it to benefit the community as well, too, and make use of it.
Sam, oh, Sam, has SEC reviewed all of the security options or possibilities around that space, the parking lot, kids, buses? Has SEC reviewed the security of this place, of this room?
To my knowledge, no, I would have to ask Jill to validate that.
I think it's essential.
Sure.
Because you've got people from the public coming into a school property, you've got them parking out there, they're probably going to be open when school is open, it's going to be open when school lets out. We had better make sure, from a security perspective, that we've got SEC's thumbprint all over that.
Sure, I will pass along that information for sure.
Mary?
I have a question also about the school use. Would this be, I'm talking about a form that parents would have to sign amongst all their forms, I'm assuming coming in, would this also work as when somebody bumps their head, needs to be checked for a concussion, or is this a place where students will get meds that they need during the day? Is it going to take over that piece, too?
They'll have some access to some of that, but that mostly will be, like, it is a medical facility, it's all secured, it's all locked up, they're not going to have narcotics or anything that would be classified, such as that on hand or anything like that. It's not going to be where, like, if a kid has to take ADHD medicine, they would come there. They would still all do that down in the office and so forth, and be administered. This is more for medical care that would be accessible by, like, the parent would have to sign a form, and like, in an emergency, they're not going to turn somebody away. Kid is, we need help, and they've got the PAs on site and that, I'm sure we would be able to call them in. But it's more for medical services that are convenient and situated in such a way that our community can make, take advantage of them, plus they do not charge if it ends up, push comes to shove with insurance. There is financial assistance in these to cover those situations for families that are financially distressed.
So, this could also be an option, and I'm going to talk to people in Troy and Rochester, too. It could be an option possibly for people in our community who maybe aren't comfortable with doctors, because they don't trust doctors, or...
That's correct.
Other situations where, where families aren't receiving medical care for what, maybe they don't have, you know, funds to cover that, but this may help, help them feel more comfortable in the school setting, you know, that we've already done some vetting, and that they're not going to get turned away. So, it's a real community asset.
Absolutely. So, when Ken and I were actually doing a walkthrough of Honor's facility at Pontiac High School, there was a number of individuals that were coming from the community at large, not necessarily students. However, at the same time, there was also students coming in as well. So, yeah, it's definitely a combination of the two, and that's what it's meant for.
Eric?
So, have we checked into what our, how this could or would affect our insurance or liability?
So, specifically, SATSEC is aware of this, obviously, so they have not, I haven't asked specifically that question. So, to answer your question, no.
Not yet.
But they are aware of it, and again, you know, again, just like we would have any type of event, as we do normally right now at our school, we have liability insurance as a general, you know, rule, and that's what we still would carry, and so...
But Honor Community Health would also have its insurance.
They do.
They're insuring and covering the actual employees and their actions.
That, that's correct. But again, you know, obviously, anyone could be sued for any reason, and we still would have liability insurance to cover any, any type of lawsuit.
Anyone else? Heather, and then Cory?
Yep, just a couple of quick clarifications. So, these, these are not Oxford Community Schools employees.
Correct.
Working. These are medical trained personnel, just, we're kind of housing them with people.
That's correct.
I just want to kind of point a couple things out for, like, community clarification. And when is the proposed date to have this open?
Well, first of all, we need to finalize this, we wanted to share this with you, discuss this, obviously, and, you know, if we were to proceed, we really need to get the bidding documents out there so that we could start the process of doing the construction component. You know, there's a fair amount of, you know, obviously, utility work, and specifically plumbing work that needs to occur, and some jackhammering of the current site, both in two classrooms, in order to make this work. And so, that's job one. And so, you know, we're looking to have this out there as quickly as possible in terms of bid documents, so.
And just to clarify for our community, this is not any type of response of the tragedy. This is, this was something that was on the table prior to, this is more of a medical community support program, this is not for mental health, that will still be handled internally and monitored as a program of Oxford Community Schools with, with the relationship with Easter Seals and some of the other places that we have, correct?
That's correct, but at the same time, this can handle, obviously, a mental health component. But as Ken had mentioned, you know, the majority of that will be handled through Easter Seals. Now, this is both the physical, this is mainly physical, but it's also, there is a component of mental that could occur here as well.
But you are correct, this is not like in response, this was in plans beforehand.
Prior to.
Tim had met with Honor Community Health, we had had many, we had meetings beforehand and so forth.
Okay.
This is just a completion of all those plans of bringing this type of center into the school, and being able to offer these services, another convenient location for our community, as well as the attractiveness of those that are in financial distress, making sure that... making sure that they, uh, like I said, there's, this is state-supported through funds, grants.
I was going to say, so the school district is not paying for this?
Not for that. We do have, we do pay for the construction, but like I said, that was also part of the package that Mr. Throne had asked for as we went up to ask for the
Right, when he went to the legislative.
Legislature.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cory?
Um, can you go up a little bit on, uh, the layout? Um, I know there's an outside door that would let the general public in.
Yep, that's right here.
Into that vestibule.
That's right.
What's to keep somebody from going out into the building?
Yep. So again, um, they would have to come through these doors. That would be a secure vestibule where the receptionist would have to physically buzz in the individual that is waiting inside this secure vestibule.
But once they're in where it looks like, what, four or five chairs?
That's right.
What's to keep them from going out into the hallway? I mean, in light of November 30th, what's to keep somebody from going out into that hallway? And then the other question is, if that was to happen, is that covered under our immunity or what if something happened?
I mean, that's, that's a fair question. I mean, again, we would have someone stationed there. It wouldn't be one of our employees. It would be an Honor Community, you know, health employee. And, you know, if someone obviously came in here with ill intent, um, that could happen.
That door in the hallway needs to be buzzed in and out.
That's what I was just going to say.
Because that way you can't go out that door without a buzz.
I was thinking of, if they fire.
The student door.
Mm-hmm.
You buzz, because, because, because
A two-way, a two-way buzz.
To look at this. There's multiple things that SEC needs to look at from a safety perspective. That's, that's what they do.
I don't think the fire chief would allow that.
Oh, because I know, I saw, you're right.
Yes, unimpeded.
Egress, but we got to get someone to look at that.
But again, you know, as, as Tom had asked, we, we could definitely, uh, we'll have Jill speak with SEC and, uh, give us their proposal for this as well.
Love the idea. Yeah, love the idea. Yeah, it's just, it's, yes, yes, Dan?
Go ahead, sorry. Um, question. What are the hours of this facility? After school? I'm presuming it's going to be not just school hours, it's going to be after that. And if that's the case, do we want to make parking areas specifically for patients going in if they have an appointment?
Yeah, we're going to have to designate parking areas down there. And that's one of the, why this location was chosen was it's actually relatively close.
Right.
I mean, most of the parking, as you probably tonight, you saw, is quite a distance away from the building. Down at that south end, that one parking lot does have some in the faculty that we would designate over to be, uh, for patrons of this place, as well as, you know, trying to, to make sure, as far as hours go, the, um, my understanding is the hours aren't going to be too much different than what the school day would, day would be, but probably maybe till four o'clock for, like, is what I understand.
That's right.
So it'd be like eight to four kind of thing.
And then one other question.
Yes.
So you stated this is probably our, one of our larger classrooms. What are we doing with the seats and the students that we would typically have used in a seated environment there? Where do we repurpose that? Is there room in the building that we repurpose or are we just fitting more and fewer rooms?
No. So our, our population, our seated population is estimated to be, um, slightly declining and specifically at the high school, uh, I believe it's around eighty to a hundred at this particular point. And so we feel that we do have, um, an opportunity here, um, to do this within this classroom.
Without losing actual instructional space because we don't have as much demand.
And then as the community grows, we'll have to rethink this?
As the community grows or is it, if it does, as it, as it goes, we'll have to rethink a lot of things at that point. But yes, we'll have to figure that piece out and we may end up, because that was one of the things that we had discussed in, in many aspects, was adding on to the high school eventually. And as you well know, there's areas of this building that were designed with that in mind. And so that is probably that end, maybe one of them.
Yep.
So we may have to move at that point, but we are a ways away from that actually happening. Our elementary population is still, is still trending. If our seated goes, the, is still low. So it's going to be some time and we'll have time to prepare for it.
Yeah, that's great. Question. We just also feel that this is the most efficient and most economical location for this, uh, currently.
Yeah. Thank you for
What is the commitment? Like five years? What, what, what is the commitment we have to get?
I'm trying to recall the number of years. If it's three to five.
Three to five, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, and like I said, the state funds this quite well and, and so forth. Like I've talked with Rosa several times and Sam can ask it. That's always been my main concern is that, um, you know, we're doing this and we think it's a great, we think it's a benefit. It'll help many of our community members that don't have direct access to community men, uh, community health, as well as, you know, there's not a ton of options and obviously we're on the waiting list for the hospital and stuff like that. So from what I understand, she's, she has been all along, very confident that the state funds these and keeps these going. And it could go in, in for quite a while, you know, or we could like readjust this in three to five years and then we would have to look at repurchasing or repurposing, I should say, this room if we wanted to. This is also, I think I'm excited as well, too, for CTE, and it might be a really good tie-in with our own, um, health services program as well, too. I gave Mrs. Butts a heads up on it and made sure. So it'd be another great tie-in as well. That we maybe even have to, some kids that can intern down there.
Sam, thank you for the update.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're on to number seven, human resources, and we have the motion for the, uh, approval of the AFSCME, uh, agreement. Would someone like to put that motion on the floor? Uh, chat?
Move to approve the 2022 to 2025 master agreement between Oxford Community Schools and Oxford School Employees, American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, AFSCME, as presented.
Thank you, sir. Uh, support?
Sorry.
Heather, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, Jill's not here, but I see Lighthouse Connection Academy. Is there a presentation for that?
No, there is no presentation. This is kind of a repeat.
Oh, this is the, this is the redo motion because language, okay. So everybody, we did a motion last time and Angela found out that the wording wasn't exactly the way it should have been. So we're being asked to redo this motion. As you can see at the end of it, it replaces the amendment previously approved at the June 21st, 2022 meeting. So would someone like to put this motion on the floor?
Move to approve the third amendment to the contract between Lighthouse Connections Academy and Oxford Community Schools. This will replace the amendment previously approved at the June 21, 2022 meeting.
Thank you very much. Support? Eric, support? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Policies. Let's see. A is first readings. B is also first readings. Um, Cory?
Yeah, and there, there were actually some that were from September and then, uh, the rest of these were updates from February.
Oh, that's, okay, I see the two dates. All right, understood. So we'll deal, should we deal with them in two different sections? What's your recommendation?
Yeah, there's two different sections. Um, question is, do you want to go through and just kind of do a high level of them or do the motion and then just?
I think that we include the, um, the, the level of, of looking into them in, in the discussion. So let's put the motion on the floor and then you can guide us into what your policy committee, um, uh, maybe some of the highlights.
Sure.
There were many. So want to put this motion on the floor? Mary?
Uh, move to approve the first reading of policy numbers 0100 revised definitions, 0167.3 revised, public participation at board meetings, 3120 revised, employment of professional staff, 6114 revised, cost principles, spending federal funds, 6152 revised, student fees, fines and supplies, 7450 revised, property inventory, 8310 revised, public records, 8320 revised, personnel files, 8330 revised, student records.
All right, everyone. And this is a motion to approve the first reading of these policies. Is there support?
Support.
Dan, support? Uh, now, uh, please, if you, on behalf of your committee, if you want to give us some highlights?
Yeah, just, and there really aren't too much. Um, like, uh, BL0100, uh, just definitions. Um, one of the things that, uh, was taken out was, um, board participation virtually or via phone. Um, during COVID, some of that stuff was allowed.
Was allowed. It is not.
Good. Um, we looked at some of the, the, um, information about public, uh, participation. We took out some of the, the wording like abusive, frivolous, harassing. Um, we also changed, um, the, the amount of time or took out the, the limit. There was actually a limit on how much time public participation could take up in a meeting. Um, that's been removed. Um, we, there's also talk that, uh, you know, participants can watch meetings like what they're doing right now, but they cannot participate as far as to send in a request or have something read if they're not physically in the meeting. Um, 3120, uh, goes over employment and staff. Um, just discusses that, uh, proper certificates and things like that need to be in place. Um, the 6114 and 6152, uh, 14 talks about how federal funds are spent. Um, and that's, it's a legal thing. It's not anything we could really control, but it discusses how money has to be spent, how it had to be accounted. Uh, 6152 talks about student fees, how to collect those fees. Um, there's even an option for, uh, low income or homeless students that may or may not be able to pay those, uh, fees or fines and things like that. Um, 7450 is about property, uh, inventory. Um, we just talked about, um, capital expenditures over 5,000 needs approval and just some of the, the information like that. Um, 8310 is about public records, um, what's covered under the confidentiality program act. Um, 8320 is personnel files, what can and cannot be released, uh, or must be foiled for personnel files. And then 8330 just talked about student records on what could and couldn't be, uh, released and, uh, what information could or could not be shared with military recruiters.
Thank you. Would you go back to 0167.3, the public participation? Um, if I recall, there was some, uh, possibility of discussion about, uh, changing the amount of time that an individual might be able to speak?
Yeah, the, that was set at three minutes.
Thank you.
Where before it was five.
Okay.
And then there, there was just some, we cleaned up some of the language, you know, also that one person comes up and speaks at a time. So you don't have a whole group coming up and just clarifying some of that, uh, the, just the rules that go along with it.
Okay.
And when a person needs to have their card to Angela, that way during participation, it just doesn't drag on and on with more and more cards. There's a timeframe of, you know, they need to have it.
So you spoke of a deadline by which the cards have to be to Angela.
When we get to public
It can't be like two minutes or five, 10 minutes into the, uh, unscheduled audience participation.
Correct. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it has to be, when we get to that point, the cards need to be there.
Cards are there.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
So since we have, not tonight, but in our meetings have been having an exceptional amount of audience participation, um, should we be posting these changes somewhere so that people are aware of them?
They're in the board packet.
Once they're approved.
One second reading, right?
Yep, after the second reading.
It's in the board packet tonight.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Awesome.
And, and one other change that's in there tonight, and thank you very much, Angela, is there is kind of a cliff note of each of the, uh, policies.
Yes.
Beforehand that is very nice.
Well done.
So that is the first round of policies for September.
All right. Any other, uh, discussion before we vote? Uh, Mary?
Thank you. And just to add to Cory's comments on the public participation at board meetings policy, I did speak with a number of other districts in Oakland County and three minutes is the standard for almost all the districts in Oakland County. Um, people were very surprised that we even had five minutes.
Thank you.
But three minutes seems to be the standard.
All right. Thank you for that. Anything else? All right. Um, we're going to vote on approving the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we look at the, um, February. Someone want to put this motion on the floor?
I'd be happy to do that again.
Please.
Move to approve the first policy reading of policy numbers 1616 new, staff dress and grooming, 3216 revised, staff dress and grooming, 4216 revised, support staff dress and grooming. This is the theme here. 5511 revised, dress and grooming, 6110 revised, grant funds, 6114 revised, cost principles, spending federal funds, 6325 revised, procurement, federal grants slash funds.
Is there support? Eric, support? Um, discussion, someone, first, I'll be first, please. Um, it's the first time I've seen new versus revised because almost always it's a revision. What, what is new about 1616?
Oh, let's see, it's by now.
That means we didn't have it before, right?
Correct.
So, so they've now created a new policy. Yes?
When you say they.
Niola?
When, 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 when the statement is made, they created a new policy, uh, it's, it's made by Niola.
Yeah, Niola.
Which is a national organization, not
Yeah, not, not us or somebody. Right. Thank you for that.
Um, I want to put them all together. I want to say that, I'm sorry, I don't have them all together in the same spot, that 1616 is new because it was consolidating some of the other ones. Sorry, I don't have them all in front of me at the moment.
All right. Well, can someone speak to the, the three of them that deal with staff dress grooming, support staff dress grooming? What has changed?
It's actually not a long one. I can read it.
Please?
Board of Education believes that administrators set an example in dress and grooming for their students to follow. An administrator who understands this precept and adheres to it enlarges the importance of his or her task, presents an image of dignity and encourages respect for authority. These factors act in a positive manner towards the maintenance of discipline. The board retains the authority to specify the following dress and grooming guidelines for staff that will prevent such manners from having an adverse impact on the educational process. When assigned to district duty, all professional staff members shall, A, be physically clean, neat and well groomed, B, dress in a manner consistent with their professional responsibilities, C, dress in a manner that communicates to the students a pride in personal appearance. There is a D and E which are not included. Um, and the last, uh, item, the board recognizes the employee's right to dress in accordance with their gender identity with the constraints of the preceding dress and grooming guidelines. And that goes, they're almost word for word for 1616, 3216, 4216, and then 5511 deals with students.
So D and E, you said, weren't in there.
Yeah, D is dress in a manner that does not cause damage to district property.
Oh, so you're, so you're not, that's one they're not putting in?
No. And E, uh, be groomed in such a way that their hairstyle or dress does not disrupt the educational process nor cause health or safety.
And then the, the next one is F?
No, it's just a separate. That's a separate, uh, option.
And what's that option?
The board recognizes employees' rights to dress in accordance with their gender identity within the constraints of the preceding dress and grooming guidelines.
And that's an option?
And that is an option.
And we did not check it.
And by not checking, it means what?
It just means we didn't check it.
Checking it means what? I need to know whether I'm saying that's okay or not okay.
Checking it means we would adopt that into the policy.
Got it. The check means we would adopt it.
It's not checked.
It is not checked at this point.
It is not checked.
Thank you. Thank you.
Really quick, too, the difference in the three policies and why one is new. One addresses administrators. I do not believe we had that. I do not believe we had that policy before they addressed administrators. Second one addresses professional staff, and the third one is support staff, but they are all the same exactly, and we kept all the options the same.
Okay.
Right.
All right, anybody have any comments or questions before we press forward? Seeing none? We're good?
Well, I was just gonna, whoops, thank you. I just wanted to add to what Dan said before, just a reminder to everybody that we have a professional service, a legal service that provides us with these, so we are in compliance with the law, as the law has changed so quickly. But again, we don't think these up, these come from a service that we pay for.
Ah, thank you for that clarity. All right, anything else? All right, seeing nothing? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Anyone for unscheduled audience participation? No? You have some scheduled events to look at. Our next board meeting is August 9th. Superintendent Weaver, anything under clarification?
Nothing under clarifications.
I know that we have a couple people that want to speak under other, any final board All right, seeing nothing. Mary, you want to talk about the OCSB flyer that we have on our, at our stations?
Thank you. President Donnelly, yes, I left a copy for everybody of the first, possibly annual, OCSBA Annual Report. That's the Oakland County School Boards Association. We were, we've done a lot of events, and we were approached by the incoming president of MASB, who happens to be from Clarkston, and he was very impressed with a lot of the things that we had done as a CASBA, as a community, or I'm sorry, as a county school board agency, and wanted us to put this together. So our president, Carol Finkelstein, from West Bloomfield, put together this little infographic, and I just wanted to share with you all, these are the things that we do as OCSBA. I was also elected as treasurer of the group for the next year. But these, when people want to know what we do at OCSBA, this is what we do. It's a lot of training, it's a lot of opportunities for advocacy, we have the Government Relations Committee. Everybody on our board here is welcome to participate in any of these events. And I just wanted to share with you, this is kind of what I do over at the OCSBA.
Well, thank you, thank you for this, and this will be a nice addition. I like the way it's capsulized, right? So that's cool. Thank you, Mary.
Chad, I understand that you have an update as well from the subcommittee?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Tom. The memorial committee met on Thursday. Mary and Cory graciously appointed me as the chair, so we discussed a number of items around what we feel needs to be considered as the work progresses, regardless of the size of the memorial, right? Looking at, you know, looking out, right, the ability to accept charitable contributions with a tax ID, provide for write-offs, the ability to carry insurance, ongoing plans for maintenance and upkeep, right? So I point these out specifically because it kind of led us into discussion around setting up a 501(c)(3) as an idea to manage all of that, right? So with that in mind, you know, the three of us have already, up to this point, we've already reached out to a number of, a number of other schools, a number of other groups that are managing memorials at this point, right, to see what we can learn from them. Those conversations are ongoing. Ken was, Ken was in the meeting with us, he's agreed to provide us with a list of other, a list of schools that he and Cabinet have been in contact with, so we can see if that, find, you know, identify the delta between who we've talked to, who they've talked to, so we can learn from more at the same time. So when we come back with that, we'll split up, the three of us will split up that list, and we'll go off and have those conversations. In addition to those, I've begun making contact with the group that manages the Orion Veterans Memorial. There's also a Veterans Memorial in Oakland that I've reached out to as well. So just to understand how those are managed, how they were, how they were set up, and how they, you know, the ongoing management, right? The other, the other thing that I've done since Thursday and today is I had a good conversation with Kelsey Cook, the village president. It came to our attention that they've, and I think we've, we heard this a little while back, that the village council had set aside some funding to put together a memorial. Kelsey, Kelsey said that they were, they had identified Scripter Park. So what we had heard in our meeting was that, I believe it was last week, I don't have the, the last village meeting, a group of our students had approached the village council in that meeting with some ideas of their own. They were similar in the way they were put together, you know, I don't want to get into too much detail, but the village council is going to continue to work with these students. They've actually given this group direction to work with the, I want to make sure I get the superintendent of Public Works, to help them understand what the ideas are, go ahead and take a look through that, see what they can and can't do. And the plan is there that it would go into Scripter Park, basically, I mean, identical placement that village council was already looking at, but anyway. The real thing that I, that I think I really want to communicate about the conversation that I had with, with Kelsey, we came out of that with a mutual agreement that the village council and our board will stay in contact. The idea that there could very well be potential for us working together, there were no specifics to say, this is what we have in, this is what we have in mind, this is what they have in mind, but we're very much walking, trying to walk down the same path, try to establish a memorial, a space for our community to remember, to heal. It's agreed upon, she and I walked away with an agreement that we're both trying to go down the same path. So we'll continue the conversation as we move forward, so. I think, am I hitting the points? So we've talked about next steps, that Mary, Cory, and I will split up the list of schools, and we'll continue to broaden those conversations that we've been having to make sure that we're, that we're learning. I think the other thing that I want to press upon everybody, our board here, and anybody listening, the intent, by us reaching out to the, to other schools, to other groups that are managing things like this, memorials like this, it is not to take what they've learned and go down that same path. What we want to do is learn from these groups that have walked this path, and then figure out what works best for Oxford. We understand that this, this memorial has to fit Oxford, and that's, that's the intent here. We just want to learn from them and figure out what it looks like for Oxford moving forward.
Good point.
Thank you.
Any, any questions on that?
I have a couple of comments. How are you deciding who else is going to be a part of this committee? Because I have to admit, as a listener of your explanation, it sounds really like it's you guys and Kelsey, and that is the committee. That's, I think that's going to be the perception of people listening. So how and when are you going to pull other people in? And how are you going to decide who you pull in, and when is that going to happen? And then a separate theory part of that is are you including the families of the four families?
Yeah, so we absolutely will, the committee is not, right, to establish the memorial, the committee doing that is absolutely not the three of us and Kelsey. My, my, my put.
But you're, where it's at?
No, 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 no.
No, that was at the village meeting, it was discussed. It is not a definitive spot. It is, the idea was thrown out. That was all it is.
Okay.
What, thank you, Cory. That, and thank, I'm glad you're asking that question, Heather. Because I want to make sure, I want to make sure that I'm clear on that. What I'm talking about at Scripter Park, that is the village doing that. That is not us.
So the village is doing that.
The village is doing that.
Gotcha.
The village is, is, they had previously earmarked some, some funds to do that, and then the students approached them and had a very similar idea, so they are working with the students to do that. I wanted to tell you that, but that doesn't, that's not us. That's not, that's not this memorial. So I'm glad you asked that clarifying question. In terms of who ends up on the committee, we don't have, we don't have that method for selecting individuals yet. Nothing has been, nothing has been solidified there. We would not.
I can add.
Do you want to add?
I just, what I, what we found in this, in our meeting, our committee meeting, is that there are so many questions on how to move forward. There are so many questions, and it wasn't an appropriate time to say we should do anything anyway, which is why we're doing some more research, because we want, we want to be sure that we are going in the right direction, which is why we want to talk with other groups, other schools who have memorials, some don't have memorials, so we just want to get some, some information, some best practices, but we don't even have a vision of what any of this might look like, or who would be on any committee. We need, we don't even know what that committee structure might look like. So that's really where we need to start, but we wanted to do some research first and bring that back to the group, because it was just, there were just so many more questions once we got started talking. Thanks, Chad. I just wanted to.
Yeah, thanks, Mary.
Actually, before you, Heather, did I answer your?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead. So, and I just, so the village has an idea that they want to do something in Scripter Park with the dollars that they've earmarked. So do we run the risk as we formulate, as the full committee comes on board of doing something contrary to what is in Scripter Park? Because I guess I don't really see the benefit to do, to duplicate it. So I guess that would be, you know, that'd be a question that I would, would, I think, as a community member, not so much as a board member, say, if we're going to have a, if we're going to have a memorial site, you know, let's let me want instead of, we got something over here, we got something over there. And that's not to say that, that, you know, all ideas are good ideas, but consolidating it, because eventually you're going to be fighting for funds, too, if you have two different locations, and that's not going to benefit either one of them.
Yeah, so I think, that's an excellent point. I don't think a memorial over here, and a memorial over here would dilute anything. But maybe, I mean, once you, once we have community members sitting around a table to decide where, where we want, or where they want to go, maybe, maybe it does, maybe it changes because we have, because of something in Scripter is already established. I mean, we very well may walk into that. But I think, you know, I think that's something only the community can tell us.
And you already have some community members in their committee. They've already brought the children, some of the, some of the students into a committee.
Yes.
So you already have, they're already doing an effort of adding people into the decision-making process. And so, and so as we begin to do the same thing, I think Dan's making a great, we have to have a pretty good reason why we would do something separate and not combined, combined efforts, because there's community members already involved. So why not marry that process rather than, are those same people going to be on this committee, too?
Right.
Deciding, I mean, like, so you've got homework to do.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I can see why you haven't really pulled everybody in yet, because you've got more questions than answers right now.
It's really tough. It's really kind of an unfair question for me to ask the three of you, because this is something that's moving independent of the three of you, and it's kind of, you know, but I just, my community member hat would say, boy, I really, let's, let's, you know, what do we always say? Together, 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 and now we're going to have two. Or, I shouldn't rephrase that, we run the risk of having two. And so that is counterintuitive to what I would think, but, you know, I'm not the brightest candle on the cake.
Right, well, and that's, and that's exactly why I reached out to Kelsey this week to learn more about what, what was going on in that space. And I mean, the good news is that she's absolutely willing to continue that conversation, and if there, if there is a way that we could or should align to walk down that path together, then, then we continue building that relationship.
Good. Any other questions or comments for the committee? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Sir, you have something under other?
Yeah, just quickly, I wanted to use the board to Todd Barless. Todd, you could stand up, please. Todd Barless is the new executive director of Student Services and Wellness, and we are excited to have him. He comes to us from Flint, a lot of experience with trauma and so forth, and that, and his background as far as helping kids and helping them through that, and so we're excited to have him onboard. He started this Monday, and he's already been a great addition, bought donuts to Cabinet meeting this morning, so without us even asking or telling him, he passed the first test.
And you make him sit for three hours to do an interdiction?
Yeah, to do that, a bit of a deduction, so.
Welcome, sir. We look forward to hearing more from you and about you.
Thank you.
That's it, sir.
All right, so let's call this meeting adjourned 9:13.